I'm gonna first give you a memo that Jack has put together today. I'll give you just a minute to read that.
Temperatures.
Yeah.
Good, did this.
So Ray, what's your understanding in the last paragraph where it refers to the process of reviewing invoices by the planning board? What do you understand your role to be, I mean if that's it, what do you understand your role to be as far as the review of invoices?
What do I understand in terms of role is that we receive the invoices. At this point, I review the invoices and decide whether I see any anomalies there and follow them to the planning board.
So I mean Jack's point is that he hoped that the process of reviewing invoices by the planning board be improved. Are you saying that they already have been improved?
No.
Okay.
No, they have not.
You know what I think Jack means, so what worries in Jack's house? I think he's got it that we're doing it backwards. Because normally if we get proposals and bids and fixed prices, we know the amount that the client's responsible for, the money's there. Now our job when we get the invoice is just to confirm that the work has been done. And what I see from looking from these fucking boring statements over three months, you know what I'm saying? And I know in professional practices, it's standard, if you have a bill, there should be the backup data behind it. So we went through some of the bills, there was no observation reports, you know. Before the planning board, before we sign a bill, first of all, the money should be there, as is the law. We verify that the work was done, but then you've got the report to say just exactly what was done.
Well, as you remember.
I think that's what Jack meant.
And as you remember in looking at these quotes, response to the RFP, at least two of the companies, as I recall, said that they would provide information upfront that says the client can expect the inspection cost to be X. No, I wouldn't expect that we'd hit X right on the penny. There might be some little variation, but it would be well documented.
And they can exceed it. And the benefit of having a chain to have all the business from a town, anybody with a long-term arrangement, any professional practice, whether it be Michelle's Field, yours, mine, whatever, is that the benefit of the volume, so if you do a job and we allow X amount of money, though you beat X amount of money and it took you longer for some reason, you eat that and hoping that the next one, you know, it has more leeway. But again, it's all in the fact that you now have exclusive rights to be the first bumble opportunity to bid on the job.
So I heard something different during the interviews and I learned something from the interviews. I definitely heard that proposals for the inspection services during the site plan review, the standard practice and what we should be expecting. I heard that it's a very different scenario when it comes to the construction site observations once a project's under construction. And I heard three firms consistently say they don't typically provide a lump sum price because it depends on the contractor. They all said sometimes you have good contractors, sometimes you have bad contractors.
Right, they said the length of time, I think. And length of time is varied because when you're putting in lines of drainage and that, again, it's all site work. You don't know how long you're gonna progress, you know, doing your old ways, you get used to that. What I remembered though is that two of them, Tom said it's impossible to calculate. In Tom's regard, our bylaws say $2,000 for observation regardless, which, I mean, the bylaws are just so far gone, it's crazy. But there's a disclaimer clause in there to give him the right, give us the right to charge after the fact anything we want for observation. So it's like open-ended, so.
Which is what we do.
So he wasn't technically wrong in doing that. So these two.
But again, so to finish what I'm saying, when we asked those other consultants, would you be willing and able to present a lump sum? They all said, well, it's not what I typically do.
But they said they would.
And it's not, it's not industry practice, but if push came to shove, I would. I don't know that it's smart for us to be asking people to do things that aren't industry practice. I don't know that, I think, you know, again, in my world, what I know about construction is when I sign a contract with a contractor, they have to have some idea of how long it's going to take them. They provide a site super and that site super's paid on a weekly basis. They predict the number of weeks that a construction project's going to be and that's how they determine their fee when they present it to you. So we should have a general idea of how many weeks the construction duration's going to be, therefore how many site visits there are. And we could set an initial fee based on that predicted amount of time. But to ask somebody to go into a lump sum and say, we really don't have any idea how long it's gonna take. The contractor didn't tell us, they might be good, they might be bad, give us your best price, that's not fair.
But don't confuse, don't confuse the timing. Don't confuse the timing of the inspection with the amount of inspection involved. If somebody does, if I do 1,000 feet of drain line and I decide to do 500 feet a day, then it's two inspections I call for it stuck. If I do 500 feet and then I go off to another task in my subdivision, the other 500 feet of drainage is done in two more steps rather than one because I'm working around. They're still inspecting 1,000 feet of drainage, which has X amount of tasks to inspect that, but they're doing it at different times. So they all said, nobody has any idea how long the construction will take and when you have to go do it. I do know for a fact you never should be going out, and this is a rule, you never go check 100 feet of drainage when you can check 500 feet because the contractor is not allowed to backfill anything until it's inspected. So the normal process is I'll get this many feet inspected, please come out and inspect it, other than that, it's all open. So what happens was you move along as quickly as you can because if not, you've got a whole site open and you can't work and finish it because you can't cross over there. So I think that the unknown, it isn't unknown, putting in the actual time and when is the contractor gonna do what? Now on a one acre site, it's gonna be a heck of a lot easier in a one acre site to predict.
It should be standard, every contractor does a schedule before they start a job, every contractor does.
Understood, but we haven't been following any kind of schedule at this point. And that's been part of the problem.
So my saying is the task is the same on what you check.
So what I wanna separate is the conversation about the concern of Tom's fees, particularly at the site. You know, I think we went into this process looking to test fees and test services. At the 11th hour, this issue came in about the concerns about Tom's fees and that's an issue and it should be addressed. What we're still trying to do is evaluate objectively three firms that presented qualifications and fees to us. And when you're sitting here saying, you know, when it comes to observations, first of all, let's be accurate about it. There's peer review fees and then there's construction fees, they're not all the same. They should be presented differently, they should be looked at differently. And I think that if, again, if we're gonna get into practice of try to do things the right way, don't sit here and ask three people for their advice, they all tell you that's not the way it's done and then we say, well, we won't ask you to do it that way anyway. I don't think that's smart, I mean, we're here to try and improve our practices and do things the right way. I don't care if it's Tom or anybody else, I'm just suggesting we shouldn't back these guys in a corner to a position that it hurts them because as we've seen, nothing's for free. If they're feeling pinched, if they're feeling, we're gonna pay for it.
Right, absolutely. Well, the customer will. But the thing is, the only problem I have, if I had from day one, and I mentioned this before we even looked, there is no control, someone is allowed basically now to go out inspecting without being called on their own, regardless of what type of inspection, drive-through, I don't know. To go out on their own, inspect and send a bill. In no parts of construction do you just go out, you're called, I need an inspection, it's all done at the pre-construction meeting, go out and do it and I'm finished up. So when I look at a bill like a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through driveway and I see observation fees of $6,000 and $7,000 and 25 and 30 hours to basically put in a long driveway, something's wrong there, you should be able to calculate that. And as I said, subdivisions are very different and the Form K that Tom talks about is valid. It shouldn't be in our bylaws for site plan because it's not even relative. You do very different things for subdivision. But a one acre site, when you're only checking the ground, is very confined. I would guess easy to establish a price to know how much it's gonna take to do that.
So you know the other property on Dedham Street that is not opening?
Hugo's.
Because?
Hugo Dean Martin.
No one was ever called to do any inspections, so the whole thing was built without any inspections done. Do you guys all remember that?
Yeah.
If we have a yahoo who's out there doing inspections on their own, why were no inspections done there?
That's a great question.
It's the same company.
That's my point.
It's the same company. Why wouldn't they be doing the same inspections?
That's my point, I mean, do you?
We're holding hands.
Here's what I'm trying to wrestle with.
My point.
The person who did this was a new employee that lived in Rentham, so he happened to go by the site.
But Tom knew.
He wasn't living there when the other site was taken down.
But Tom knew.
Tom knew that.
Tom knew. My point is, my, no, my point I'm trying to make.
I know the answer to that question, I think.
You gotta be looking at both sides of the story.
Yeah, and I am.
The way that you interpret some things that Tom says, like for instance, he refused to do the drainage report without a contract, I don't see that as holding the town hostage.
Oh, I thought that was horrible.
I think that's smart by Tom.
I thought that was horrible.
Makes me scrutinize, makes me scrutinize about his fees and services and.
I had talked with Tom.
That was terrible.
I had talked with Tom at the Polkie meetings, I talked with Tom. And I talked to him aside because the basin was missed and I found the second one that was missing. And I said, you get the job, will you give your price for this? Because it was all him, no one else was gonna do this, he had exclusive rights because he was still our guy and he was involved in it, as Walter said, he was the large one to do it. When you give us a price, I said, go high. Because I don't trust the parameters they're gonna use with drainage and I wanna make sure this thing doesn't flood the people on Maple Street and flood the people, flood the wetlands and alter it fully. So you make sure that you do what you gotta do to check this. So when I got that, I was astonished, Michelle. He had been through three meetings, two hours each with us and all the Polkies.
Months of working on this.
And Maserati and I was dumped on, it's like saying, I did your tax return, you didn't pay me and a week you need a cop for refinancing, I say, no, you gotta pay me.
He held us hostage, he's been working on this thing for months now. And we've been working, you guys aren't involved in all the stuff that we do day-to-day. So we've been meeting with, we've been meeting with these guys for months now, trying to move forward with this project. And at the very last minute, he had this since, I was wrong in my email, he had this since the 15th of December.
January.
You know, we sat here for seven hours with them, this was shocking, it was shocking to me.
And then he tells me by phone, I'm not gonna work on this unless I get a contract.
I can say I don't blame him, I don't blame him given the scrutiny that's been. The very thing that we are criticizing him for, he stepped up to the plate and saying, I don't wanna do it unless you guys feel confident about my fee.
Why didn't we give him a surprise, why didn't we give him a surprise?
I have to agree with some of what Michelle's saying in terms of.
Not at all, that's not, that's not professional.
I mean, you know, we're trying to put, you know, some of the process in place, controls in place and at the same time, we want them to go ahead and do work. So I.
He's been doing work though, Jeff, it's not like we just brought it to the table today as a brand new.
I want to talk to you about the surprise.
And we've accepted, we've accepted it in the process.
There's one relationship out there that let's talk about.
He's feeling a little bit, he's feeling a little under the microscope right now.
Then he could have said that, he could have said, I feel a little bit under the microscope. But you know what he said to me? He said to me, no, I won't do that without a contract. That was his words, he didn't say that I'm uncomfortable, nothing like that.
I said to Tom, give me a price for the drainage and go high, specifically, him and I. After we left the third meeting, give us a price and go high and check this, this and that because I'm afraid they're gonna try to sneak something through.
Now that was what, for the Concom or what?
No, that was for the planning board, you just all come out.
You're talking about the bid that we just received.
Maybe he felt that that was in his best interest, John. I can't necessarily say that if I'm being scrutinized for fees.
You're stretching it, Michelle, you're stretching it.
It's a different perspective, right, it's my opinion and it's your advice.
You're intending to do it.
I see this stuff every day of my life, this is what I live, with contractors and consultants.
So do I, and I'm gonna feel doing it.
I can put a valid perspective on the table then. It's not a stretch, it's my perspective. I'm a professional, I've been doing this 25 years and my opinion's my opinion, it's not a stretch. I'm saying the guy has been just raked over the coals about fees that are too high, and we go and tell him, go high.
Let me ask you something.
What, what are you, are you kidding me?
No, no, I didn't say, wait a second.
I would not take that advice.
I didn't say go high, I said, you make sure.
You just said it three times, you said go high and hide, go high and.
I said, I wanted the extra work done to cover all the parameters that you normally wouldn't do. If you remember one of the things that would come up, you said, I never checked the engine, in an email when the lawsuits came. I don't check the engineer's calculations, I assume that they're right, they're licensed. I wanted them checked this time, that was the whole thing when Evan was done. So I wanted them checked, but as I sit back and I see Alfred Liari's building at the same stage of construction with a very sophisticated drainage with probably 35 to 40 pre-cast construction items in there and in place, he set the frame, okay, and I see Dunkin' Donuts and then yes, I see Hugo because this is what, I'm trying to get my hands around, and he tells Ray, I drive by when I feel necessary to inspect when I think it protects the town. So he's at the pre-construction meeting, so my question is, Dunkin' Donuts has 37, of which he talked to the site supervisor six times. Alfred Liari's same project has three and Hugo's has none. Now I walked up to talk to the site supervisor, Mike Darling, who has three people, twice. It's all gated, there's one place to get in, the trailer is right there and as soon as I get in, somebody's on greeting me. So I talked to Darling and say, and he was the one that mentioned, I don't see him, I see his car, I don't see him. So when we got the actual, this is unacceptable. I go up to there, I talked to one guy six times, well, who did you talk to the other times? And I'm assuming the 14 times he wiped it off the bill, what was that? He said they failed, what was it, why would you just forget about it? It makes no sense.
Well, a couple things.
Come on, to the point of him not being willing to take this job, here he is among two other companies bidding for the next contract and he's saying, hey, no way, baby, I'm not showing cooperation with the town.
I know, 13 years.
That's the way others do it.
Well, I think you take 240 Dedham Street off the table because I think what happened.
Which one is that?
You can't.
Hugo's?
Ray, I was here. So I've been with the planning board for four years. I'm not talking. 240, Hugo's property, are we talking about the same case?
I'm talking about 240.
Okay, Hugo's property, work was done without it ever coming to the attention of the planning board. So to the extent that things were handled differently between 240 and 242, that's out the window.
Question for you, was there a pre-construction meeting before 240 was started? Because that's when Tom and the building inspector all sit in. Because I said, one of my first things that surprised me when Tom says, no, you check into somebody. Tom said, I go by whenever I feel necessary and bill. So if he was at the pre-construction meeting.
How would we know if there's a pre-construction meeting, we're not privy.
John, what I'm saying is, John.
We're not privy to that information.
No, but we can find out.
But if Tom's normally there, who contacts Tom?
They contracted before he gets the site filled in because you can't fill it in because if you go and the site's been filled in, you have to take everything out.
So in a scenario where, in a scenario where the developer just begins doing work, okay, on the property.
He can.
Has nothing to do with the planning board, it has nothing to do with Tom Houston, it may have something to do with the building commission or another department.
But before he can fill in anything.
So I'm just saying, let me finish.
Okay, sorry.
I'm saying the 240 Dedham Street, I believe it fits that profile. So any pre-construction meetings and all that, I don't think you're gonna find it, I could be wrong, but I don't think you're gonna find it.
I can check a lot.
So it came up when there needed to be some, there needed to be some things from the planning board, okay? And at that point, the question was asked, okay, what's been done in terms of any of the observations? Oh, nothing's been done.
Because he was never contacted by the contractor.
That can be checked, let's go back before you're on the planning board, when Steve was around. Walgreens was started, Walgreens had some blasting and hole ramming and they had to put in this fancy drainage system. All of a sudden, they're fucking held up for three or four months, do you know why? No one ever checked the drainage system and all the pipes in there were the wrong size. What about that one?
I can't speak to it, I wasn't in this capacity, maybe Steve, I don't know.
I don't remember.
Check with the building department, that whole project was tied up because the wrong pipes were put in. And then it came up, who's checking this? I think it was at a meeting that some of you guys mentioned it, Steve. Who's checking this, it's going right by Town Hall.
This is the first I've ever heard of each other, it's like, I can't.
All right, okay.
Guys, 7 o'clock, where are we going here? We had a good conversation about some of the faults that we and the engineering consultant have been participating in. Where are we going here, we're supposed to be sitting here talking.
My thoughts are very simple, I'll explain it to you, I explained it to Jeff. I would like for the next year, I don't think we can hire somebody currently with regulations all adrift, I really don't. I think we have to work, and that's why we're a full-time planner, to get this thing administratively in line. I have no problem, we've got three good firms, including Mr. Houston, who I consider a good engineer. I would send, just like we did, send it out, we get the bids back in three days. We had to turn around to the drainage in two and a half or three days. Send it out, take the lowest price, we are totally covered now as far as an applicant. This is what conservation has done for 20 years. We're totally covered by applicants saying, hey, I'm getting robbed, this and that. We got a price not to exceed, there's no such thing as a modification, it's done, it's done. So you present the project, before the applications would come in, they weren't complete. We know that that's a regulation we have, Ray's in charge of making application complete. So they review the complete application, just like this Polkie one. They give us a price, all three, whoever wants to bid, and we take the lowest one. If the client has some objection, we have a basis because we're not letting somebody bill unencumbered. That's always been my biggest issue, it's not done in this country.
That's only gonna get us through the site plan review, what about construction?
Same thing for construction, I would say for the observation, I would have the same three firms come in and say, this is the project, this is no magic.
This is where I disagree with you.
Fine, we're doing, we're just agreeing.
I think you should be consistent, whatever firm did the site plan review, you should be doing the construction review.
You can be, but you don't have to be because you know something.
I know you don't have to.
It's also, you know, just like this procurement here, it's also a basic internal control structure that you do in accounting, you do in corporations. When you have one person collect the money and the other person record it, many people would say, don't do that. So in this regard, you've got a full design, you've got a full system, let another licensed person go check it. Not to say they will, but it doesn't cause any harm because you got a different set of eyes looking at the work.
There's pros and cons to both ways.
Yes, there are, but here's my only thing, at least rather than somebody, we get the school built. The architects had a 6% cost on the school build when the town approved the money. We got all the preliminary plans done, the site plan done. Nobody knew that in the architectural's contract, they're only going for the sketches. When they come back to the finished building, we had funding, they raised their rate to 8%. Cost us $1 million because nobody knew, the architectural rates, they own the sketch and if you didn't deal with them, you don't get the work. On that same premise, so we got a million dollars extra for the school. On the same premise, somebody comes in and says, well, I'm gonna make that up for the observation. No, I would like the cost control on that too. If three people wanna come in and bid on this, you're welcome to it.
But that's my second reason, is we were told by three firms that that's not a traditional nor industry standard practice to do construction observations that way, so that would be my second reason.
With a price in advance.
The first, with a lump sum.
Okay, well, two of them said they would do it and that's what Reagan Bill committed.
They said they'd do it if they had to.
Why not?
Because that's not a good way to do business, John, we're trying to improve. We've been asked by our town administrator to improve our way of doing business, why walk into it like a dying light?
I think it's a great one because when you have, you're talking about, you're talking about looking at the quality of soils, you're talking at a drainpipe installation, I could do the review.
The problem we've had.
There's not much to do.
But the problem we've had with all of this.
No, I don't blame you, because that'd be too expensive.
The reason why he's saying that, the problem we've had is that we've had an open checkbook for our customers coming in and they have to open up their checkbook to PSC and PSC has been writing checks to themselves. That's the problem we've been having and that's why we're trying to put a cap on it to say, no more of this.
Well, that's, but putting the cap on and changing the process is independent of who we choose.
True, absolutely.
Independent of who.
And we do need to choose somebody.
But John is proposing, we don't choose.
I understand, but whatever process we choose, if we don't choose one, go with his proposal, right? I mean, we've gotta set some guidelines.
We have to correct all of this because, you know, some of the regulations for the application fee, they're wrong. They're built on a square foot price of a building, they don't check the building, they only check the site. The other thing, they get observation with an unlimited time to make as much money as you want. So we're checking your driveway, you're $7,000 or when you're doing a preliminary for like the Pondville Russo guy that complained about head charging $500 to look at the water that overflowed and he's $12,000 when the application fee for that thing was 2,500. $12,000 before he walks away, we have to stop that.
That's needless.
I don't disagree, I think we need to stop.
I think after one year, Walter, I think after one year of dealing with three engineers, I think we're gonna know what was right. The only way I've subsided to in that regard is, this is Ray's job, this is why the town hired Ray. He's to put this thing in order. He's responsible 40 hours to correct all of these rules and regulations, everything. Ray's the pro of this, he can read proposals better than I can, that's for sure. If he has somebody that he's comfortable working with for a while, I would acquiesce to that. Other than that, I'd rather see an open bid so people don't keep walking away from here because who in here would like to just get a bill unknown for an amount and not knowing what was done? No one.
And that's what happens.
No one would.
That's exactly what happens here.
Well, if that's what's happening. That's what we should change, that's what we should change.
We gotta change our race table, we gotta.
I don't believe that we should have open-ended consultants during the whole course of an entire year. We have to get one consultant and stick with one consultant. That, I don't agree that we should have three different people that should bid on it for every project that we have. That would be a disaster.
It's done in few towns right now. As a matter of fact, it's done in Franklin and North Attleboro.
With Franklin, I've talked with North Attleboro.
That's how they do it.
And North Attleboro, just recently I spoke with the planner there and what they do is they base their fees upon the impervious surface for site plan. They also base their fees upon the length of road, so the engineering.
Well, we can look at how we base our fees, I mean, we can look at everything.
But we have to create roles for the engineering.
But you know, you're bringing something in here, this Pond Street Commercial Center, you're talking about something that went from 2000, the beginning of 2007 to mid 2012. So of course, there's gonna be this many visits because probably there were 100 changes on visits.
I mean, what was the value of the construction on this? I mean, I'd love to see that, I mean, what's this percentage of the value of construction?
What about the drive-through, what about the Dunkin' Donuts drive-through?
Read the second page.
Man, we're getting mixed up with history and where we wanna go.
Well, the reason why is because my only point of bringing this up is that there's a long history with this company.
Oh, right, there's a long history, we don't like it, it sucks, we're gonna change it.
It's been a terrible job with the fiduciary responsibilities with this town.
Fair enough, it's history, we can do our job, now we're gonna do our job.
Walter, my only concern with getting the three is that right now, within the regulations we have, they are all over the place. I just would be uncomfortable hiring one person unless we do it again on a fixed price. But then again, if we're not beating it out, because we don't have regulations to establish a price, the fixed price for one person could be 9,000.
But there's a different way, you could still select one firm and still ask them at the beginning of each job to present their fee.
Right, but what if it's too high, we have nothing to compare it to, which is my reason for getting two other ones. Until in our regulations, it says, this is exactly what you can charge for this job based on some research from other towns and how they do it. That's what I was saying and that's the reason I was saying just a couple of people, shout to him, Steve. This was turned around in three days, this particular site review, which I thought was outstanding and was very thorough.
It's two days.
Two days, okay. But how are we gonna tell someone what to do, we don't have anything written. You know, don't forget, we take this oath, you know, we're here every other, every other week and Ray's here 40 hours. The oath talks about upholding the state and local bylaws and regulations, that's our job, that's what we swear to. You know what? Our regulations call for an individual wet stand from an engineer and a signature, it was never done. We have fraud on four projects, the two of them walk away. That's a regulation, that's in there, it's not checked. We have a.
That's been changed.
Thank God, because if you did and there was one original signature and you hold it up and you say, this is two totally different people, it wasn't like rocket science. If it was, I wouldn't have found it. But you've got the Fox Run thing, which was duct, it's a major problem. And it's duct, we're sitting at those meetings and there's not a boom. I gotta coordinate a meeting and I'm not an engineer and then we find out, hey, by the way, there's a second 200-foot basin that's not in there, oh, oh. And by the way, what about the pipes, we're gonna maintain all their private sewer pipes, whoa. So, you know, this is like, wow.
I would recommend the planning board consider hiring two firms if they're gonna go the way John is suggesting. My suggestion would be to go with Beta and Weston and Sampson at discount, PSC. I just think there's way too much history there with.
I just think there's way too much history there with, there's too much, too many things going wrong, way too many things. And you've got some big cases, no inspections, other cases, way too many. And I just, the control's not there, and I think the town's been taken advantage of. That's the rest of it at PSC.
You know, I'm torn because I know in a situation like this, you've got a significant body of knowledge which can help PSC, can hurt PSC, when you don't have, in the case of Weston and Sampson, Weston and Sampson, you don't feel as a town
They're engineers. They're engineers.
Have anything other than perhaps some wastewater-type experience working with them as wastewater consultants. So, so I, you know, trying to take that into context, that the body of work is much bigger for PSC, which.
But the firms that you're dealing with, the other two firms have, one has 500 employees, the other one has 120, I understand, right?
Here's how it works.
But let me finish, John. Let me finish.
So, there are definitely some very positive examples of where PSC has helped this board over the last four years. And I was chairman for two years, and I can cite several. So, let's try to bring a balanced perspective to the conversation is what I'm asking for. Now, as far as Beta, I knew nothing about Beta until we began this process. Now, they submitted what seems to be an impressive review. It's not all that different than what PSC would provide, but it's.
Just so you know, we use them, the conservation used them for 106, 108 Main Street. And we used them for a three-month period. This Parisi guy is one of the leading authorities in drainage in the state. And we got him from Figwellman's site. He answered our questions on both of those filings for about three months. Never got a go.
Okay. So, so I also understand where they're in the running for a three-year contract with the town. Obviously, any company is gonna, they're gonna bend over backwards to do an outstanding job. I wouldn't have expected it to be a minute late, given that they're trying to impress the board. So, I mean, let's be realistic too, in terms of whether or not that's an objective day.
Without a doubt. They're a huge company.
So, unrelated to what we're doing here, I've made a comment before that this ain't my day job in terms of this type of work. And I was having some conversation with someone that is looking to develop some property. And we had an interesting conversation. Without me bringing up the name Beta Group, the property isn't in the town of Norfolk. And without me bringing up the name of Beta Group, I was basically told that there are some significant challenges right now in this town because Beta Group is now doing all the engineering, and the cost to the applicants is increasing substantially since that time, okay? And I will not disclose the town or any additional information, because I don't want, no, it's not hearsay. It's factual information.
Did you see the facts?
John, it's factual information. I wouldn't, John, I would not bring it.
Jeff, it's hearsay. It's hearsay. Come on.
John, I can give you specific numbers because I asked the questions. So you can interpret it as hearsay. My fellow colleagues on the board, they'll interpret it as they fit.
I understand. I understand.
I wouldn't put it in front of this board if it was hearsay, John, okay?
Do you understand what I mean by hearsay?
Jeff, can I just explain it?
Hearsay is when you get information from a third party without verifying it yourself. That's hearsay.
Let him make his point.
Okay, it is verified, John.
Let's just let him make his point.
If you verify it, fine. It's not hearsay.
Okay, so.
If you verify it, fine.
So we're talking about double, basically, the cost.
So we're just gonna make up numbers here now.
John?
Let him make his point, please.
John, I'm just saying, on one hand, you've got one data point from a company that's looking for our business, that did a great job, and, you know, we're gonna rally around that as a reason to hire them. I'm just saying that there's other data out there that, quite frankly, I was not looking for. I didn't even bring up Beta Group. I was shocked that name was mentioned to me, and we happen to be in the middle of this process. So you don't need to take into consideration a bit, John. That's up to you.
That's why you should like my idea about having three different people and see how they do. See how they do.
Maybe it's a good idea. Maybe it's a good idea.
Jeff, double compare to what's happened.
Double compare to what it has historically been until Beta became.
Yeah, I know, but who was doing that, and were they caught in an outfit and?
Can I just jump in?
I don't wanna get into detail.
If you're talking about the town of Franklin, and I think you are, the prior engineer was GZA. GZA, I spoke with the planner about this. She gave me this information. She said that GZA hadn't changed their fees in about six years. So when Beta Group did come on, people were shocked by what it cost to do a review. But that is industry standard, as a shock.
But if you look at the rates that were in these quotes that we just got, Beta's in the middle, essentially.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying, and I think, I think what you're telling us is correct and factual. And I think that the person's perspective that you're talking about is based upon some old information that, so when they came forward with this new project, they were shocked. They were honestly absolutely shocked, and that's what the planner was telling me.
Well, we've got a proposal on the table that says, look, let's not pick one, let's pick more than one.
Unless, unless.
That's a proposal. He proposed it, you backed him up, you're against it. How do you think?
Well, I'm not, I'm not against it permanently. You know, we can leave it open-ended like this until we can make our decision. Because, I mean, we have very little engineering and consulting being done right now, right?
Well, there's more coming.
There's stuff coming, but.
My thought is, the town spent a lot of money, you're a selectman. The town spent a lot of money to hire a professional planner. This is his field. He has degrees in it. We're here every other week for three hours to hear people come and bring their plans forward. This is technically an administrative thing, which comes under Ray's thing. He's the one that has to work with these people. He's the one that has to coordinate everything. We come in and give our say based on what he proposes before. He does the legwork. I'm here to support him. So like I said before I gave that proposal, if he is one person after dealing with these firms that he's comfortable with, I'd be willing to acquiesce to that. Because he's the one with the knowledge, not me. I'm here to simply try to get good development in this town and treat the people fair. Because if you don't treat people fair, they won't come back, and you won't have good development. That's it. Simple as that.
And we want the same thing as far as that goes, John. So, I mean, in terms of how we get there, that's really what the conversation is about.
That's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Yeah, I think that the policies of the way we did things, probably a little bit too open-ended. I mean, but we've been doing it the exact same way since before I was ever on the board.
Which doesn't mean it's right.
That's right. I mean, we, there's, there's been, since I've been on the board, there's been three different engineering firms. There's been a couple of planners. So, it's not as if we did anything about changing the way we did our work. Because we never changed the way we did anything. And now that you're here and you're telling us, oh, we should have been doing this all along. Now that you've told us we should have been doing this all along, now we're moving forward and we're trying to change things. But I think that we could go along for a period of time, and I don't know how long a period of time that it is that we should go for, but the recommendation of having these three different companies bid on them, maybe give it a trial period of three months or something like that, without us hiring a full-time.
And so we could buy our own cross controls. When we have our own cross controls in Stephen, then we can hire one person, and they have to live by it.
Because we do have to build it in, right?
But our cross controls should be fair. That's why I said to start, let the three come in. But my objection was never with the quality of work that Tom did. I read every single thing he did religiously, and I dealt with inspections on the field. I know his shortcomings. I know his good points, and I won't even elaborate. Just that the last year has been a circus for this board. Things are coming up that really doesn't look good. And basically, most of the things coming up are in our regulations, that is our job to follow, that we have not been following. The state law with chapter 44, that's basic. And in your email, should we follow it that way? And by suggestion I sent to Ray, I don't think you really understood me. There's not a should or what. You've got to. That's the law. You don't have a choice.
What do you, Tom, what email?
The money you emailed said about, we perhaps should prerequisite the funds being in the account before.
Well, because it was a big rush for tonight, you know, for tonight's meeting, once we're regarding Fox Run. And my point was, let's not make the same mistake here just because we have a deadline we're driving towards.
Right, exactly.
They'd already asked the question, it was already done. That's the reason why I made the call.
It would assume some liability as we swear to uphold these things for people that come in that could bill carte blanche, unencumbered. We have some responsibility there.
I agree. Now, in terms of whether we're set up presently to operate the manner where we're going to be successful with the 53G accounts, be successful following the law in terms of proper funding, and the bookkeeping and such. We are, we're resourced for that. That's already been taken care of, and that's how we're doing business going forward.
Going forward, exactly.
The only way we do it.
And so in terms of the questions regarding site observations, site observations, is that something now that we're going to, or maybe we've already transitioned to an appointment-type of scenario, like the Board of Health with Septic, because that's one of the conversations we had at the last meeting? Have we done that, or is that?
What do you mean by that?
An appointment. So in other words, the contractor will basically call the planning board and say, okay, you know, the milestone that we agreed to with the engineer was such and such. I've reached that point. I'm ready for an inspection. And then we would coordinate that.
That's how it should be done.
Nothing's going on right now.
Nothing's going on right now. So I guess those are the kinds of things, Walter, that we need to understand and we need to, you know, get some consensus.
The engineer doing observations should be at the pre-construction meeting, and it's all scheduled right then when he has to call. And basically, you know, just so you know, for insurance liability, when you get a liability on a project, no one is allowed to walk on these sites, you know, without being escorted around. That's an insurance law. So by walking along there and just looking at stuff and helping the skelter and talking to, I don't know who, but somebody, that's not, that's against the law. Well, it's insurance law, because there's liability there.
Well, to your point earlier, and your thought also about doing this on a temporary basis until we kind of get our act together. Think about the process of rewriting zoning bylaws. It takes quite an effort to get the darn things prepared, and they certainly aren't gonna be presented at the May town meeting.
But these aren't zoning though.
This is subdivision. So subdivision's different, and you guys have purview over that. So you can, you can make the changes to the subdivision regulations very quickly. You can get that done without too much trouble.
30-day notice and a public notice in the paper, we can change them.
All right.
So you guys have, you guys have that purview, and you can do it.
And we have a public hearing.
The zoning changes are the others. But you know, when someone sits down.
Those won't happen till the fall, at best.
When someone sits down to take one acre site to build a 5,000-foot building, and they need one site plan permit and three special permits, they all have different times. Sometimes they may have to go to the ZBA. How many people do you think are gonna spend $100,000 or whatever it takes to get to the point to go there knowing that, guess what? I get four different criteria to meet. Most of them have super majorities. I get to have all these special permits that expire in a year. I mean, that really sets the stage for somebody saying, why? Why would I ever wanna risk my money to build a building that basically is gonna break even for a while with the rent snuff-up has? And not only do I need a permit for the site plan, I need a permit for stormwater, I need a permit for signage, I need a permit for linked parking. All of these permits. So they say, you know what? It's not worth it to me. I can't take the risk because I don't wanna spend the money to get to that point. This is one of the things that we control that we can change. As to why can't they come down, we give them one site plan approval. I don't see you get the experience like this. And that's it. Cover everything in one site plan approval, whether it be super majority or not. Just get it done.
Well, even if there are special permits, we try to get them all in before the first hearing.
But now we've got the question with some of these special permits time-lapsing. We have the thing with Pondville Plaza, and then there's a different time permit on the ZBA that's expired, and you like to have one date that you.
We got five minutes. Can we stay on task at hand? Ray, would you be opposed to bidding to three firms? Are you, is the taste in the mouth so bad about PSC that you can't even tolerate that concept?
I cannot tolerate it.
So I think this, one of the smartest things I heard tonight at the table was, you know, John said that the game changer in all of this is Ray. Ray is new to the town. Ray is new to the board. This is his administrative duty. We're here to support him, you know, and if we're asking him to do something that's just not tolerable to get through his day, then I think that's not supporting him.
Well, I personally think that PSC got caught up in something that, a lot of it's beyond their control. They were doing it, they were doing it the same way for a long time with our approval.
That's right. You're right.
So we were approving everything that they did. So therefore.
I agree, and I think they've brought a lot of value to this town, and I think to the best point, we need to not, I prefer not to throw the baby out with the bathwater, but this is the man that has to live it every day. He has to have the relationship. It has to be a working relationship. If it's not tolerable enough to have a working relationship, then that has to be taken under consideration.
The icing on the cake is the lawsuit that we're dealing with right now. We're in court with Valley Street, Al Craig Larry, and we're dealing with something that is, in my opinion, I think is ridiculous for the town to have to even deal with. The last, there was nine points that Tom brought from the planning board over to the Board of Health without any jurisdiction, as far as I can tell. He thinks he has jurisdiction. I totally disagree. But he brought it to the Board of Health as the Board of Health's engineer, and made it an issue one night with the Board of Health. They decided to require Al Craig Larry to revise his plans and basically grab control over this site plan. Now, you guys were there living it, and you had said, I'm paraphrasing, but you had said, we've had enough of this, move it on. I've had it. And so it did. It did move on, and it got grabbed by this engineer, brought to the Board of Health, and now we've got a lawsuit. And the long story short in this, which is, to me, is the icing on the cake, is that we're, the engineer was asked, what could he do to satisfy your conditions, your issues? Well, what is, what he wants to do, and I can give you a copy of this or just let you see it, but this is the Board of Health approval. And they want him to have at the bottom of the stormwater system an elevation of 191.25. That's the solution. Well, if you look at the plan, it's already in there. And this is what we were fighting over. We're still in court on this. We have not resolved the court issue. And we've made such a big issue out of something that I think this is a personal issue, and it's not a professional issue. And I think that's the last straw, I mean. It's time to cut the cord.
And it's 10,000 fees, legal fees so far.
He's spent our money way too much, and I can show you that. So that's where I stand on it, and that's why I definitively answer your question the way I do.
Ray has a big responsibility, because there's a lot of things that have to change if you wanna do this right. And like I said, when he started, I'm here to support him because in the end, we come and go, but this is his job. This is his livelihood. And I have the judgment that he's the one that's the trained one. He's the one that should be making the calls, not us. We should just be deciding on which way to go theoretically and generally speaking. But he should be doing all the research work for us and bringing these proposals to us based on what other towns do. We're not recreating a new wheel here.
Well, I think that the unfortunate thing is that we have some atypical projects that have come before this board in the not-too-distant past, which I think represent a disproportionate percentage of the projects that Ray has seen since he's come. Very strange circumstances with fraudulent stamps on plans, okay? And engineers who did not have the proper certification, things of that nature. So, it becomes more difficult to untangle those situations in my mind. It's very difficult because it's not a process that has a beginning, a middle, and an end. It becomes this circular process where you're circling back, and you're getting now new information from alternative engineering firms. And to the extent that, you know, those types of projects have affected Ray and his opinion of PSC, I think that's very unfortunate and I think unfair, in my opinion. But I do agree that he's an important part of the, you know, the equation here in terms of our success.
To be the most important person at the table until Ray is up to stuff is Gino. Anything engineering-wise will be done and corrected during the review process. Whether we can answer a question that's engineering at the table or not, that'll be done in the review process, the plan submitted. Having the knowledge of the bylaws intimately like Gino does, that Ray's got a learning curve probably quite a while longer to get, is essential. So having him there gives me comfort. But you know what? But you know what? The Board of Health hasn't met since July. We used to meet once a week. Now we're meeting once a month. The ZBA basically meets every four or five months, perhaps. Things out there now are booming. Everybody is looking for spring projects. When there's a malfunction in a town, in a development area, not only does it run through people that have money to develop, it runs through the banks that loan the money. So unfortunately, when you've got one thing that really isn't in sync and causes people money and time and grief, it affects people that you never get a chance to see because they just stay away. But right now, I would think that, not that I'm complaining about the number of meetings, but I think right now, relatively speaking to market conditions, things are pretty slow.
Okay, the room downstairs is full of people.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
So we have to go. So our decision for tonight is we are going to have a trial period with.
Until the administrative.
Until all the administrative problems are straightened out.
Which is essentially gonna run the rest of this year.
Easy.
Let's face it.
Easy.
It's gonna run the rest of this year.
So we will go for the end of the fiscal year?
For the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, no, this is gonna be longer than that.
I think it'll go all year, all calendar year.
It all depends.
Well, we have to make a decision at some point. We can't just let it just float along.
Well, I mean, even if we wanted to choose company X or a new company X, we have to go out for an RFP again.
Yeah, it'll take till the end of the year, because remember, summertime in the middle of the race, we got a few months, and before you know it, it'll be.
Well, let's not predict how long it's gonna take.
But, you know, but I think, you know, getting some information in terms of best practices out there, and we've asked some of these companies that have come before us, you know, towns do you think do this well? You know, that would help us a lot.
That's definitely. We can just pick the best pieces out of the different towns, you know, and use them.
Steve, can I ask you one question? With the same three that we sent out the last time.
I think they're fine.
Yeah, those three that we sent it out the last time, the differences were not astronomical.
So how will we handle this election? Will we just rotate it so that there's some balanced body of work? Not at the end of this bid?
Well, looks good.
If we start one company on a project, we probably should stick with the company for the project. Or do you think that we should have a second bid for construction observations?
I think that we should have a second bid for the construction.
I disagree.
I think that her approach is better.
We can still ask them for a fee, but I think we stay with the consistent.
I agree, because you're gonna get into a situation where they know they're competing for a contract, and you're gonna have the observation people questioning information in the original plan and other engineer.
And if people refer you to know much more about it, it could hurt them because they don't understand how complex it is.
If the people that review us, give us a fixed price or a price not to exceed, and they have the task.
Based on a certain duration or a certain.
The tasks.
Certain tasks, and if the tasks change or increase, their fee should change or increase.
So we're all in agreement on this, right? Should we take a vote on this, or do you want?
One more question. Hang on for a second before you go to a vote. I just want to mention to you that I did put on, just in case we got to this point and we were pressed for time, we put on the agenda, at the end of the agenda, discussion of this very topic. So if you'd like to postpone a decision till then, you have that option. So don't feel like you have to be forced into a decision tonight.
Oh, we haven't, we're not making a decision tonight. We're sort of coasting from tonight.
We send the projects out to bid to the three, the best price we take.
Yeah, the only question I have, just in a practical sense.
You gotta be kidding me. Saying you're not, that's the three that bid? You gotta be kidding me. After you spent the whole meeting saying we shouldn't deal with Houston anymore.
I agree with you.
Well, he did not say that.
I was trying to be respectful of everybody. Yes, I know it. It's shocking. I understand, Michelle. I understand.
Ray says he won't deal with Houston, so it's true. It's really.
It's not that he doesn't want, he doesn't like dealing with them, but.
I don't trust him. Let's put it on the table.
Your opinion on it may change. I just don't think.
Trust my verifying, I guess, for the next few months.
Okay, so before we leave, I'm just gonna make a motion that we go forward for temporary unspecified time to put all of our observations out to bid with three engineering consulting firms that we've been using. Do I have to name them?
No.
No, well, I don't have to.
Certain fault.
Yeah, so is that, is there a favorability on this?
No.
I would support it. One question I have is in practical.
True, I'll go with.
In a practical sense, does that mean that each one of these firms needs to speak with the applicant to properly prepare their proposal? Or is this something that the plans will speak officially?
The plans should always speak for themselves.
Totally realistic for three. Otherwise, I'd say that could be untenable if you're the applicant dealing with three different. Okay, okay.
And John, yes, no?
Yes.
Yes. So it's four to one.
I only do that because I'm a big compromiser.
Okay.
You get points. You get major points for making that.
Good. Let's get to our meeting.
I always succumb to ladies when I can.
Oh, Peter, did you have something that you wanted?
Well, you kind of addressed it, because when you were talking about how long you were gonna do it for, I just wanted to make sure, yes, in this time period of the year, you're doing the review, but you wanna make sure you get some experience in the construction phase, which is traditionally in the summer, fall. That's all. I wanna make sure you just, you're gonna assess these people at some point, which is normally.
Well, if.
Not when there's four feet of snow on the ground.
When you go for the fiscal year, it puts you right in the middle of the summer.
Two separate issues, construction and site review. Thank you, Steve.